Welcome, everybody, to the July 29th, 2020, City of Imperial Beach Special Meeting, Special Council Meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. This is Mayor Serge Dedina. Council members and staff, please mute yourselves, and when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. I want to welcome everyone to our special meeting today, July 29th, 2020, and thank everyone for their patience and understanding as we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process. And I want to thank our staff for making that happen, especially Edward. It's, I know it's been challenging, but I appreciate you and Jackie, our city clerk, for making that happen. This meeting must comply with the executive order N 2920 and all other provisions of state law. We hope everyone is at home safe or in a safe place and healthy, and we appreciate your cooperation with all the actions required to keep you safe. And now the city clerk, Kelly, will announce the public comment process.
This is City Clerk Kelly. Public comments on a special meeting agenda are limited to items on the special meeting agenda notice. Members of the public can submit comments now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Please note in the subject line if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just to be entered into the record. Only the first 100 words will be read aloud so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join via Zoom through your desktop computer, cellphone app, or telephone. Please refer to the meeting details provided on the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak when called upon. When it is the appropriate time, you will be instructed to use the raise hand option on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your telephone. Comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Clerk Kelly. And now, if you wouldn't mind, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember West?
West, aye.
Councilmember Patton?
Here.
Mayor Dedina?
Present.
Councilmember Spriggs and Mayor Protam Agiri are absent.
Councilmember Spriggs is present.
Councilmember Spriggs is present.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spriggs. Appreciate it. And now I'd like to have, Councilmember Patton, can please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation,
Great, great. Thank you very much. And now, I'd like to invite each council member to speak in the order. It's typically seated in the dais, starting with Councilmember Patton.
Yes, thank you. It's been definitely a strange month, obviously, with many ups and downs. I feel Imperial Beach seems to be on the upswing on a lot of things, and so there's a lot of positive things happening in Imperial Beach. I want to acknowledge Councilmember West. I know he's not going to do it. He had a big part in a scavenger hunt that recently took place with businesses here in town, as well as over 250 participants, all riding bikes, looking for clues and answers for the scavenger hunt. Sandag and Sylvie from IB Active also took a big part in it. My wife and daughter were obsessed in finding answers, so, you know, got everybody on bikes, and I thought it was a really, really good thing. And so, thanks, Mr. West, as well as everybody involved in that. Working on some ideas to get people active here in Imperial Beach. Distance learning is going to be starting very soon for our students here in the South Bay District, as well as Sweetwater District. Tomorrow, the mayor and I are going to be meeting with Katie McNamara via Zoom to come up with some other ideas to get our population more active. I have some really great ideas, and hopefully, they could be started soon. Until then, I just want to remind everybody, please, 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 do your part in social distancing and wear your mask. Always have one with you, and just do your part in keeping everybody, as well as your Imperial Beach safe. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patton. And again, I do remember you just talking about how great the scavenger hunt and how excited your family was. So again, yeah, thank you, Mr. West, for that. I really appreciate it. It was really great, great event. Lots of good publicity and PR for Imperial Beach. And now we have Mr. West. Please go ahead.
Excellent. Thanks, Councilmember Patton. I know you had a, your family was a top-ten finisher on the scavenger hunt, but I'd like to congratulate the GIampa family, all five of them, their baby included, as the overall winners of the scavenger hunt. So, great, I'm happy you enjoyed it there. Councilman Patton and all, so it was great. So-
Second place, second place for the Patton family, just by the way.
I know, I know. It was close, it was close. So, it has been a strange month, but it's been really busy, and I wanted to take a little time to give you a little bit of update of the things we've been doing, working on. So, as your representative of the South County Economic Development Council, we held a forum where we really took a deep dive into the USMCA, the United States Mexico Canada Agreement, NAFTA 2.0, and it really focused on a lot of the things that we're working on as far as trying to improve trade and get the easing of restrictions, so we can really make this dynamic border region even better than it is. And, you know, we are really fueling the economy of both regions are taking off because of that in prior to COVID. So, we're hoping that we can get back when they are able to open up OTI 2 and really have a great flow of trade and personnel. You know, this is the great thing about the USMCA, really looked at strengthening labor standards to align with all the family values and environmental protection that we hold near and dear here in Imperial Beach. And then, as your representative of the South County San Diego Community Power, we had two board meetings and two subcommittees, and I really want to thank Ms. Anna Webb and Mr. Tom Summers, who are leading the Imperial Beach Citizens Advisory Committee on the San Diego Community Power. They've been doing a great job, really being looked at as a leader amongst all of the other five cities. And it's a great thing. We're moving forward with clean energy to bring to our region. I would definitely, for all personnel that are out there, please keep an eye on the developments that are happening with San Diego Gas and Electric and the city of San Diego, because it will have impacts. And, great news, we're moving forward with our CEO search. We're down to less than two. So, we should be announcing in the next month. As the, your representative of the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority, you know, we had our, I am chairing the capital improvement project now, and that includes the $3 billion Terminal One expansion. And we are, we have really took a look at it and the impacts that COVID are having, and after great discussions, we're moving forward with that expansion. And the reason why is it's really, we are hoping that this is going to be the the San Diego economic shot in the arm to get it back moving after COVID. I mean, it's $3 billion projects. It's going to have a lot of great jobs and great jobs at the airport, and then even all the ancillary jobs that are out there supporting all of the things, which include transportation, getting some type of mobility to the airport. So, we're not just having to drive cars, and so it was a really great thing. So, we'll be moving forward with that. And then, lastly, most importantly, I really want to thank all of the council members here. As a representative who's been really working with our businesses and trying to get them back on their feet, you know, when the rest of San Diego, when the governor decided that he had to dial back the opening standards and only allow outdoor dining, it was the leadership of this council that was able to, we put in place an outdoor dining ease of restrictions six weeks prior to the governor having to dial back and only allow dining in outdoor settings. And that allowed a lot of our businesses to immediately pivot from an indoor dining facilities and outdoor dining facilities. And while the rest of the cities around our county were trying to figure out how to make this happen, your leadership, we already had it in place, and it was already an application process that we were implementing. So, it was great, and that is because of the leadership of you, Mayor, and the rest of the council to get that done. So, I thank you very much. And I'm going to be honest with you, the outdoor dining has been a hit. Both, I've spoken with the Brigantine, Abigail, and IB Forum, and Ron Chapman with Coronado Brewing Company. Each one of them have really made a, it's been successful. They've seen people really enjoy it. And in fact, Ron took the same things, the same seating arrangements that he was doing here in IB, moved it over to his Coronado place. So, it's been great, and I'm happy to report that a lot of businesses have been taking advantage of the CARES Act funding, the $2,500 that, but we still have more, and businesses need to get on the, those businesses who haven't applied, need to immediately, we're getting down to where it's getting close. I know City Manager Hall will talk a little bit about this in the future. But what we are looking at, we have found that $2,500 may not be enough for many of our businesses. They have, you know, they have exceeded, many have exceeded that $2,500 limit. We are going to be looking to bring into the council in the immediate future, a possibility of expanding that to $5,000. It'll still keep us below the CARES Act allotment of $150,000, but it'll allow some of those businesses that have incurred more costs, especially some of our small restaurants who've had to purchase tents and tables to be outside, that this allows them to really take advantage of that. So, those businesses that are out there listening, I highly recommend that you keep an eye on the, our upcoming agenda, because we will be looking at expanding that $2,500 up to $5,000. So, and then, last but not least, we will be doing this weekend. There will be a Safe Slow Street event on Seacoast again, from date to IB Boulevard. And then, on Monday, we'll be kicking off, we have one of our Business Roundtable events via Zoom at 6:00 PM. So, come on, come on, we'll be talking a little bit at the Business Roundtable. We're going to be looking at that increase in the amounts, and also some ideas to help businesses as they manage outdoor facilities. So, thank you very much, Mayor, and the rest of the council. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. West. Appreciate all your leadership, especially on the business issues. And I know me and I worked together with IB Fitness as well, when they had some questions and concerns. So, appreciate you jumping on that immediately, and all the other business related issues when the closing and openings on the modified openings happened again. And so, Councilmember Spriggs, good to hear from you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Yes, as Councilmember West said, it's been a while since we met, so quite a few things have gone on. I'll just try to cover the key ones very quickly. On the, can't believe it, we haven't met since mid-June. On the 18th, the Coastal Cities Sea Level Rise Working Group, Coastal Cities and Coastal Commission met, had a fruitful discussion and presentations on best practices by the three county representatives, representing three different counties in the state of California that are coastal. Then, on the 17th of July, it was the city's turn, led by Imperial Beach. And with the tremendous support of Andy Hall and Tyler Foltz, we put on a presentation along with, followed by Eureka and Santa Barbara, but I think ours was probably the most comprehensive, and we really laid out some of the barnacles in the LCP process, which has really essentially left Imperial Beach without an approved new LCP. Because of all of the issues raised and the goalposts changed constantly by the Coastal Commission staff, we essentially ran out of money and ran out of consultant time. So, we told basically the reasons why that happened, and the two commissioners and senior staff of the Coastal Commission, plus our Coastal County and City colleagues were listening in. And I think everybody got a good, got a good understanding of how this process needs to be streamlined and simplified so that every coastal city knows what to expect and can get through the process fairly quickly, even if it means it has to be recertified or reviewed again in 10 years. They're trying to make a perfect process, and it's not working. On the 19th, I attended the League of California Cities Board of Directors. That was the 19th of June. A lot of discussion about COVID-19 strategies, about CARES Act and other efforts to try to get more benefits to cities. On the 6th of July, the, myself and the mayor and, oh, I guess about 15 or 20 other elected officials from around the county had a conference call meeting with the sheriff to discuss law enforcement practices. And I think it was a very fruitful discussion. The Sheriff Gore himself was a major participant on the sheriff's side with that, so we got to hear his views. And I think there was, there was a lot of, a lot of new information, a lot of useful information exchanged between the city representatives and Sheriff Gore and his senior staff. The mayor may have more to report on that, because he also spoke at that session. On the, on the, where are we? The 18th? Oh, sorry. There have been various meetings since our last council meeting that Mayor Protam Agiri and I have had together and with city staff on the Law Enforcement Review Committee that the council created. We had, we've had one of five scheduled major meetings with community members. That was on the 18th, and I think that went very well. We basically, at that meeting, had a detailed review of the city financial situation, vis a vis the sheriff's, the cost of sheriff's services. And I think it was enlightening for a lot of community members to see that, you know, the situation that we're in, that we've already had to make reductions in city services, including a fire department position in order to maintain the contract with the sheriff, and that something is going to need to be done. Moving right, oh, the next one is going to be this Saturday, August 1st, from 9:00 to 12:00 with the community. Let's see, on, oh, on the 8th of July, I had a full left hip replacement, and that went very well. I'm up and, up and about and have walked a couple miles in the last few days. So, that's going well, just for those of you who follow hip replacement activity. On the 22nd, I participated in the Metro JPA Finance Committee. This was an important committee meeting, because we approved, we recommended approval by the full Metro JPA of the annual budget. So, a lot of budgetary documents were reviewed, including the charges to each municipality, each participating agency, including Imperial Beach. And I think that went all well, and it looks pretty straightforward for us. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to the next council member. Thank you.
City Clerk Kelly is, Mayor Protam Agiri here?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, Mr. Spriggs. And I'm glad that you're, you're doing better. That's good to hear. So, a lot going on. Just quickly, big picture issues with Sandag, the city of Imperial Beach, Slana Beach, Lemon Grove, and Coronado. Didn't appeal on the REA numbers. These are housing numbers that are allocated to each city based on what we've all felt were different reasons. I think us and Lemon, Imperial Beach and Lemon Grove really argued that, as working class, middle-class communities, just throwing thousands of housing units on us would absolutely disrupt the fabric of our communities. And in Imperial Beach's case, 60% of the housing allocated is for high-income housing, which doesn't seem to make any sense. So, you know, our residents have made it really clear they do not want further gentrification of the city. So, that unfortunately was rejected by a weighted vote at Sandag, and then, so we'll be evaluating other options to address those issues. And Imperial Beach made it clear that we're not opposed to housing, but housing needs to be allocated fairly in cities like Poway. And cities in Del Mar have to actually do way less housing than we do, even though I have much more money and much more land. So, anyway, we'll continue on that. And then, the recent meeting, I was actually on vacation at the Grand Canyon. The North Rim physically distanced and safe with a mask on on public trails, but Councilmember West attended the Sandag meeting, but I had worked out a deal with Catherine Blackster, the mayor of San Diego, to get the issue of trash along our highways addressed by Sandag and Caltrans. And so, thanks, Mr. West. There's a subcommittee going to be created on that. You were the one that helped move that across the goal line. And a really important fact that our highways are covered in garbage, and that garbage washes into Imperial Beach and our river valleys, et cetera, and the ocean, whether it's from Highway 5 or 805 or any of the freeways that are around, and Caltrans isn't doing its job in cleaning it up. And so, the cities are then responsible for cleaning up trash that should be managed by a state highway. So, I see you took off your video camera, Mr. West. You're just doing that. Okay, that's fine. Anyway, so that's, that's really important. And on water quality, I was able to speak to the Smart Border Coalition, which is an organization that works on both sides of the border, to leadership in Tijuana, to talk about how, and I think the words I used, were eviscerating, that sewage from Tijuana was eviscerating Imperial Beach, that we don't have a future. If we can't continue to address this, that there are no excuses to be made, that Mexico needs to fix its own sewer system. The Consul of Mexico and San Diego was on that call, made a promise to fix the issue, which came out in the media. Fortunately, that has not happened. And then, today, we had a meeting with EPA Leadership, Region 9 Leadership, and actually, Washington Leadership on the $300 million from USMCA that's being allocated to fix this problem. I was joined by Mary Salas, Supervisor Greg Cox, our Port Commissioner Dan Malcolm, who all echoed my comments that we need to make it a priority to invest funds on the US side of the border, not the Mexico side of the border. I think corruption charges from the Governor of Baja on the sewer system management just makes it clear that the money that we got from our congressional delegation needs to be allocated to have diversion infrastructure on the US side of the border. And then, number two, that there's absolutely no excuse for these short-term, these flows of 10 to 20 million gallons a day of sewage that have basically rendered our beaches pretty much closed since November 2019 are unacceptable. And it's very clear the IBWC has a fix. That sewage can be routed through the IBWCs on plant. It's not clear why that hasn't happened before. And we've been asking for that since November. Jane Harkins, the Commissioner of the IBWC, has made that clear that they can do that. So, we urged everyone to fix the problem, and again, stop making excuses and get it done. And I think there's been a lot of confusion about what the Imperial Beach's strategy. At the request of the Justice Department, the Trump administration, the Trump administration's Justice Department, the IBWC, we stayed our lawsuit, which all that means is that basically, that gives, we've agreed, along with the state of California, the city of Chilavest, to the port, the city of San Diego, on the Surf Rider Foundation, that we're just not going to move forward in court until we have a chance to actually see what the proposals are on the table. We've made it clear, and the judge has made it clear that the federal government is still being held accountable. And we think that it's important to have this process, right? That there's been money allocated. We need to push them. But we also made it clear that the IBWC is not doing its job by not, by allowing these flows to continue, and sort of like the new normal. We're very, very concerned about it, obviously, as is every resident of IB, our city council, our city staff, and our lifeguards who have to patrol these beaches during our heat waves, when people need the beach more than ever. So, we're going to continue fighting on this. We're not done. We're going to pursue every avenue, but we're going to make sure that US funds, when we get them, are expended in a cost-effective way that's not sent to Mexican authorities, who frankly, we believe maybe using, maybe increasing flows so that they then pressure federal authorities in the US and then expend money, more money in Mexico. So, that's not something, obviously, something we're very, very concerned about. So, with that, I want to thank again, especially staffer Chris Helmer, who's been working behind the scenes, our environmental director, to really move this process forward, to continue to crush on everyone, of course, our city council and the rest of our city staff, who's been very supportive of this, and also as well, making your voices heard. So, with that, I will stop there. And, oh, finally, you know, we had our girls' water polo team win their state championships. We had a whole, we had a whole series of accolades and city honors and a parade planned. It literally happened the week before, I think, the pandemic really hit, and we closed down. So, I've asked our city manager, Andy Hall, to figure out how we can get that, get our girls to be honored, hopefully, in our next couple of council meetings, and do some more honoring in our city, in public recognition of them. I think it's really important that we get back to normal and acknowledge these superstar girls that, you know, really made IB proud and every one of our residents proud by becoming the first-ever state champions in the history of Imperial Beach. And during the first water polo state championship. So, with that, I will stop and turn it over to Mr. Hall.
Mayor, this is Assistant City Manager Erica Cortez. I don't know if you, I saw Mayor Protam Paul Amagiri join us. I don't know if you wanted to give her the floor before I move on to my comments.
Sure, sorry. She's not on my screen. Sure, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just like a couple of things to report. I attended last week an MTS Public Security meeting, Subcommittee meeting, where we discussed restructuring our Public Safety and Transit Enforcement Department. We also discussed our pilot diversion program for fare evasion, and that, those are a couple of items that will be brought to the board tomorrow, which is when we have our next board meeting. There's going to be an external review process of the entire Transit Enforcement Department. And we are thinking about putting together an ad hoc committee to do this. That includes an external agency. It potentially could be the American Agency for Public Transit and a Citizens Advisory Ad hoc Committee to help review this, this department, and that can make informed decisions moving forward. And I apologize for being late. My meeting, I was just on the equity recovery task force for the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. I chair the Subcommittee on Environmental Justice, and where we discuss some of the environmental conditions, like air pollution, wastewater pollution, and other types of conditions that are exacerbating the COVID-19 impacts to public health and also COVID-related deaths. So, that's one of the tasks that our Subcommittee will spearhead moving forward in the next couple of weeks. And that's it on my end. Sorry, again, I was, I was late. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And so, now, either communications from staff, Mr. Hall, or Assistant City Manager Cortez? Any updates, comments?
Yes, this is Assistant City Manager Cortez. I just want to take the opportunity to introduce a new member of our executive team, Adam Chase. He joined as the Marine Safety Chief, July, early July, actually, late June, and he was able to tackle one of our most peaked and hardest holidays, weekends, which is the 4th of July. So, with that, I would like to give Adam an opportunity to introduce himself to the members of the council and the community as well.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here for the first meeting. And I did dive red in, so to speak, for this 4th of July and summer, and we also had some issues, some scares with COVID. So, I was doing some lifeguarding on day number one. I carry nearly 30 years of experience in public safety related to beaches and parks in San Diego, and I started lifeguarding when I was 17 years old and still lifeguard today. And I've been around the ocean and the beach my entire life. I have a lot of experience working with the sheriff over those 30 years. And I'm really excited to be working here with the Imperial Beach team and lead the Marine Safety Department into the future. I have extensive training in law enforcement and rescue, EMT, swiftwater rescue, scuba diving, you name it. And so, I'm really excited to be here, and everyone's been really supportive and welcoming, and I thank the entire city staff and the community as well. So, thank you.
I want to thank you, Adam. This is the mayor. You know, you started, literally, like we said- like we said, July Fourth weekend with a COVID scare, with closed beaches and giant gnarly surf with big, big rip currents and gnarly rescues. And you handled it incredibly professionally and very well. So, as we continue to say, it may not get much harder than this. And we actually hope it gets easier with clean beaches and that we move through this virus. So, we're great, welcome to have you aboard, and great to have you aboard, and welcome to IB.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any additional comments from staff?
No additional comments, Mayor.
I'm sorry, City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments?
To the members of the public who are participating via Zoom, if you have a comment to make under public comments, please use the raise hand option. Or if you're participating via telephone, please do star nine. Okay, seeing none, there are no live oral comments. And, Mr. Mayor, we have no emailed comments as well.
Thank you so much. The public comment period is now closed. I'd like to enter a motion to approve consent calendar items number one through five.
So moved, West.
Second.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by West, second by Spriggs, to approve consent calendar item numbers one through five. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye, West.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
And Mayor Didina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And now, we go to item number one. That's reports consideration of ordinance number 2020-1199 and resolution number 2020-72 regarding placement of a locally controlled emergency response and vital services, one cent general sales tax measure, to maintain vital city services on the November 2020 general municipal election ballot for voter consideration. And City Manager Hall will give the report. Thank you.
Mayor and council, this is City Manager Hall. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you tonight. First, I want to make sure to thank our financial staff, the Assistant City Manager Cortez, as well as our Finance Director, Joanne Getmed, for all of their work. And since the creation of your last municipal budget, one of the things that you asked staff to do was to explore the potential of new revenue for our city. And so, this is our report. And at the end, we will have a request of the city council. But I did, I did want to make sure that there could be some public comment tonight. So, just to reiterate that everyone is admitted to the meeting, but they're placed on mute, and their video is turned off unless they're asked on to speak or ask a question. And then you can see there that it's already been explained. If you have a question at the end of the presentation, you can raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. And then, again, be patient. Some of these Zoom meetings always have a surprise or two. So, we wanted to talk about a couple of things tonight. We needed to do a quick financial overview, talk about some revenue options, process and timelines, should the city council choose to place a measure on the ballot, take some public comment, and then get some direction from the city council, a decision and direction to move forward. So, the first thing we wanted to do real quickly is talk about the general fund expenditures in FY20. Now, FY20 is the fiscal year that ended on June 30th of 2020, so just about a month ago. And just make sure that everyone understands essentially how our expenditures work in the city. So, you can see the largest portion there is on the lower left-hand side, and that's public safety. And that makes up about, a little over half of our budget goes to public safety. You can see a small slice there for recreation in our community. That is primarily maintenance of our parks and our facilities. We do not have a functioning recreation department. And then we have non-departmental issues for things like legal expenses and some of those kinds of things, administrative costs of the mayor and council and the city clerk. And then a majority of our departments fall under general operations with community development and public works and some of those kinds of departments. So, you can kind of see how our expenditures break down. But one of the things we wanted to look at is how we compare then with other general funds in the community. So, if you look at general fund expenditures per person in the county, you can see on the left-hand side that there's a high-end Del Mar of about $3,000 per person in their community that is spent in the general fund. And then you can see Imperial Beach down there, about 760, about the same area as Chula Vista, with Lemon Grove being one of the communities that spends the less per person. But it's important to compare Imperial Beach to beach cities, because beach cities are, they function a little bit differently. Of course, on warm days like today, we have a lot of people that come to the beach. And on a given day in the summer, our population can double. And so, beach communities have a little different function than the inland communities, especially in the summertime months. So, when you compare the city of Imperial Beach with the other beach cities, you can see that by far, and that's even including San Diego, which is not a true beach community, but it does have several beaches, even though it's a large city with a lot of inland areas as well, you can see that in terms of beach cities, the city of Imperial Beach has a much lower expenditure per person than the other coastal communities. The next thing we wanted to do was to maybe extrapolate some of that data and talk a little bit about what that might mean. So, if you look at Imperial Beach compared to the average throughout the county, you can see that our per capita or our per person spending in our community is about $760 per person. If we took the average per capita or average per person spending of all the cities in the county, it's about $1,350 per person. And if you look at the spending in beach cities, it's about $1,600 per person. So, what would that mean in Imperial Beach? So, you can see in the center there, if Imperial Beach had the average per capita spending or per person spending of $1,349 per person, our municipal budget would be about $37 million instead of 20, 21 million. And if we had the average of beach cities, not the highest, but if we had the average of the beach cities in the county, our municipal budget would be more in line with about a $44 million budget. So, more than double, that'd be about $24 million higher if we had the average budget or per capita spending in our community. So, one of the things that has always been talked about recently also is, well, what about COVID-19? What is the city doing to address some of those things financially? And that has been something that has happened since the beginning of the year. And you can see there on the list some of the things that we've done. Don't need to go through them. I think that the community is very familiar with some of the things that we've tried to do. But we have had an impact from COVID-19, there's no doubt, especially in the sales tax and the transit occupancy tax revenues for the city. So, in the last couple of years, I think it's important, I think the city council, this is what brought on this, the request of the city council to have staff look at potential revenue sources, is we have always, we have worked very hard to make sure that we present to the city council a balanced budget. We want to make sure that we are always providing you with a balanced budget. In order to do that, in FY20, we had to reduce employee costs of about $300,000. You can see there, if you look at impacts on some of our public safety departments, the only department that did not reduce in price at this point in time is the Sheriff's Department. We have a five-year contract with the Sheriff's Department. We've honored that contract, and so, we paid that contract in full. But that has had impact on our other departments. So, our second-largest department, which is the Fire Department, we have had to decrease that budget over the last couple of years by about $380,000. That includes not only the cut of one firefighter position, but they've had to make some other operational cuts in that department. Now, I want to make sure that the city council understands that every department's had to make cutbacks, but it's starting to impact our public safety as well. So, if we switch now so that we can talk a little bit about revenue sources and how we are able to operate in the city, you can see, starting at about midnight and going down to about 5 o'clock there, that is the property tax. That's the property tax. And that is the largest revenue source that we have in the city. And then you can see the next revenue source as you go around, the next largest source of revenue that we have in our community is the Port of San Diego. And then we have franchise taxes. Now, franchise taxes, those are the taxes that are charged to the utility companies, SDG&E, AT&amp;T, all the utility companies, so that they can operate in our right-of-way. They pay a tax to us for that privilege. We have sales tax, we have gas taxes, and then we have the transit occupancy tax. The transit occupancy tax is a tax that is assessed to people who stay in our hotels. So, it's a nightly tax of 10% that is charged to people who stay in either our hotels or in short-term rentals or vacation rentals that we have in the community. So, you can see in the lower right-hand column there, the revenue that we're talking about, that's about 82% of our revenue are from these major revenue sources. The other 18% comes from things like building permit fees or business license fees and some of those kinds of things. But these are the major sources of revenue that we have in the community. So, in order to start looking at some of the potential revenue sources, one of the things we wanted to look at was the sales tax comparison. So, you can see Imperial Beach, there's in the blue, we generate about $1.4 million annually in sales tax. City of Coronado is about $3.7 million. And then a city like Lemon Grove that has, you know, car dealerships and some big-box stores, they're able to generate about $5.8 million in sales tax. Now, when you compare that with TOT, you can see that the city of Imperial Beach generates about $840,000. City of Coronado is just under $17 million. And then a city like Lemon Grove, only $52,000, and that's probably vacation rentals. And I only included that so you can see that the makeup of cities is very different. And the makeup of Imperial Beach, this is primarily a bedroom community. Most of our revenue is made up from property tax. We do have a little bit in sales tax. We do have some businesses. And we have a couple of hotels. But you can see the difference there in Coronado. They don't make a lot of money on sales tax. Lemon Grove makes more money on sales tax than Coronado, but they make a lot of money on their TOT. But then, Lemon Grove doesn't make a lot of money on TOT. So, again, those are put in as comparisons so that you can see that everybody's revenue stream, every city is a little bit different in their structure, just to give you an idea of where Imperial Beach compares with communities that are similar in size to us, Coronado and Lemon Grove. So, one of the things that we looked at was a potential revenue increase with a one-cent sales tax. So, basically, for every dollar on a taxable good that someone would spend in Imperial Beach, if you went to a restaurant and you spent a dollar, you would pay one penny more in sales tax. And that would essentially double our sales tax and generate about another $1.3 million in net revenue based off of our FY20 budget. And so, essentially, when you look at the summary of potential revenue in our community, a one-cent sales tax would generate about $1.3 million in new revenue. And then we would be comparable to the neighboring communities of Chula Vista and National City who already have that one-cent sales tax in their revenue sources. So, just wanted to also talk about the priorities. So, when we started looking at potential revenue sources for the community, one of the things we tried to do was conduct some surveys, both some random sampling surveys, as well as some surveys on our website, and on Join the Conversation was the name of that survey. And I wanted to make sure that we share with the city council what your residents believe are very important to them. And this is kind of, these were the six highest-scoring ideas that the residents came up with. You can see that maintaining 911 emergency response was very important, maintaining paramedic services, requiring public disclosure of all spending. Transparency is really important to our community, so we want to make sure we do that. Whether or not a tax measure is placed on the ballot, coordinating with county and regional first responders to get resources for health services, maintaining rapid response to burglaries, maintaining local fire protection. So, you can see that personal protection, community enhancement, those are all the really important things that came up in the surveys for the residents. So, you know, one of the things we're looking at now is, even as we try to reopen, we don't know how long the financial, the effects of the pandemic will last. I think we had all hoped that by now, maybe things would start to recover. What we're finding is that things might continue on for a little while. But I think that our residents understand that this is temporary in nature, and we will get through this, and we will have a future. But it is going to take us a little while. And we have appreciated very much the support that we've gotten from our residents. In the meantime, we have to make sure that we continue to provide health and safety for our community. And we have to make sure that we keep clean and safe communities, rapid 911 emergency capacity, and all those other priorities that our residents identified in those surveys. So, as we continue to get information from the surveys, we found out that our residents understand that, at least 45% of them understand there's a great need for some revenue, and 30% believe there's at least some need for revenue. So, 74% think that there's great need or some, compared with 8% who say there's no real need for revenue in the community. So, I think our residents understand that we do, in order to maintain the community and some of the services that we're providing and at a high level, we probably do need some additional revenue according to the surveys. So, we looked at two different options, one being a one-cent sales tax and one being a 4% transit occupancy tax. You can see there that the one-cent sales tax, definitely yes or probably yes, is undecided, but leaning yes. It's about 69% of people say, you know what, we could support this. On a 4% transit occupancy tax, about 68% said that they could support transit occupancy tax, which is, again, a tax that is assessed to people staying in hotels in the community. So, working with our consultant, we have put together what we believe could be, and again, I know that the city council has not been involved in this process. I think it was important to be a process that was driven by residents and what we heard from the surveys, and what, you know, the information that came back on whether or not our residents would want to vote on this. But it really is a decision of the residents at this point in time. And so, working with our consultant, we have put together a question for the city council to consider, and I'll read that very quickly. Shall the ordinance to maintain fire protection, paramedics, 911 emergency response, prevention programs, neighborhood, community crime prevention, address homelessness, improve natural disaster, medical emergency response, maintain streets, maintain lifeguard center, parks, community center, youth after-school senior programs, and other general services by establishing a one-cent sales tax, providing approximately $1.3 million annually until ended by voters, requiring independent audits, public disclosure of spending, all funds for Imperial Beach be adopted? So, should the city council, after deliberation tonight and hearing from the residents, decide that it is appropriate to place a measure on the ballot, we are first, we are required to have this meeting tonight. And then, it must be submitted to the registrar of voters before August 7. And that way, it can be placed on this November ballot for the November 3 election of 2020. Revenue from this kind of a measure would likely begin to flow in the spring, probably the March or April timeframe of 2021. So, that gives you a little bit of a timeline. So, we still need to hear from the residents and whether or not the city council chooses to place a measure on the ballot. I think it's really important that we, this information has been incredible. And we have received an incredible response. And in working with our consultants, they said that Imperial Beach, for the size of this community, we have received a very large response. Hundreds of people have taken the survey, they have mailed in mailers, and we have been, but still, we still want to continue to hear from the residents. And so, you can see there on the third bullet down at the bottom, there is a website, www imperialbeachca.gov/jtc, which stands for Join the Conversation. And you can take a survey and continue to make sure that the city council is aware of what your priorities are for the community. So, with that, Mayor and council, we are certainly open to the questions and comments from the residents. There are some written comments that we can read after the live comments. But again, use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. And then, if you are on a phone, star nine. We have the clock here. We can limit that to three minutes for each speaker. And then the city clerk can make an announcement and mute that speaker should they exceed three minutes. So, if there's no immediate questions from the mayor and council, we look forward to hearing any comments that we may have from the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Really excellent and thorough discussion. I really appreciate that. So, yeah, City Clerk Kelly, can we move to public comments, please, before we go to council discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first comment is by Mitch McKay. Can you hear me? Okay. Mitch McKay, please go ahead. Mitch McKay, please, please go ahead. Please unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted. Thank you. This is Mitch McKay. Yeah, this is Mitch McKay, 714 Holly Avenue, Imperial Beach. I wanted to speak to the mayor and city council tonight. I I wanted to read a prepared statement. And looking forward to the prospect of having a new revenue generating initiative on the November ballot. The city's residents need to be able to rest assured. That this new revenue source will absolutely be 100% earmarked. For city operations and services to benefit all residents. And that it not be diverted for use in lawsuits, specialty consultants. Or individual council members' personal pet projects or pompous campaign promises. It is the fiduciary responsibility of this city council and this city manager. To guarantee that all future tax dollars generated from this local ballot initiative. Are put to use in support of the residents' top priorities. As identified by the city in the most recent surveys and in the join the conversation feedback sessions. The residents have made it very clear that the city must ensure that we. Continue to be prepared for medical and catastrophic emergencies. With adequate 911 emergency response and healthcare capacity. And to achieve these goals, we have to maintain effective 911 emergency response capacity. Maintain local paramedic service capacity. We also need to maintain rapid response to home burglaries and other neighborhood endangering crime. We need to keep our neighborhood safe with consistent and effective patrols, lighting and community engagement. I respect, I respectfully request that each of you pledge tonight to safeguard the public's trust. Its resources and to maintain the highest ethical intentions of your public oath of office. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Garcia.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm David Garcia. I am the president of SEIU Local 221. Representing 13,000 public employees in San Diego and Imperial County. And also just we represent the. City workers in Chula Vista National City, Imperial Beach. And and almost 11,000 in the county of San Diego. So first of all, the members of SEIU, which are the city workers of Imperial Beach. Are proud to work for the city and provide the services, the everyday services. That I know the community has come to rely on. And they have struggled with dwindling staff. Skeleton crews, and we understand that the budget has become extremely tight and they have had concerns about maintaining the services. We believe as SEIU Local 221, that this is a good move on the part of the city. I also agree with the the last speaker that there should be oversight. I myself am on the Chula Vista Measure P Oversight Committee. Where we look at all the expenditures and we approve those expenditures. That to make sure that they're not violating the spirit of the measure. But our union stands in support of this measure. And we ask you to vote in favor and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Garcia. We do appreciate it. Thanks. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Robert Miller. Mr. Miller, please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Bob. Good afternoon, Bob Miller, 1167. Fifth Street, Imperial Beach, Mayor, City Council. Super, City Manager Hall's. Graphs are very illustrating and. And helpful. We have to continue the basic needs of the city. That's very obvious. It's also very obvious with the pandemic that the. Revenues are have diminished, TOT, the sales tax. And I think this is this one cent taxes as good a remedy as you have at this point. I think this is not going to preclude the council from, I mean, the staff and council from. Looking for other revenues as we go down the line, but right now we need this, these basic services just have to be met. And I strongly encourage the city council to support this one cent tax. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. We do appreciate it. Next speaker.
Are there any other public speakers? Mr. Mayor, Assistant City Manager Cortez will read the written comments.
Thank you.
This is Assistant City Manager Cortez. I have three written comments to read. One of them is exceeds the number of words, so the rest will enter into the record. First comment from Mark Williams. Support for local tax. I feel along with my neighbors that a local sales tax would help Imperial Beach. Nevertheless, there are concerns about maintaining future funding of our law enforcement partners. To that end, I suggest we look at two separate sales tax. Both both suggestions lock in funding for public safety. Both new proposals would allow additional funding collected. Be used for public safety responses that do not require law enforcement. Our third suggestion is a special sales tax with exclusive use for parks and youth senior programs is also applicable. None of these would require a sunset clause. Again, the rest will be entered into the record. Comment number two from Jack Fisher. Regarding the 1% sales tax increase, I strongly believe that an additional tax would have specific areas where they are used. There should be clear and concise uses for the extra taxes that will be generated, not just generalities. I also feel strongly that it should include an end date that is reasonable and not excessive. And the last comment from Josephine Hamada. Resolution number 2929-72, place tax measure on the November 2nd, 2020 general election ballot, sales tax and TOT tax. I support the sales tax to 1% and the TOT tax to either 3 or 4%, which the majority of the residents approve. No additional comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Assistant City Manager Cortez, and to all the residents who spoke. In person or live, not in person, and then obviously who sent email. We do appreciate all your thoughtful and comments and taking the time to do that. And now, unless there are additional staff comments or any clarifications. We will move to city council discussion and we can start with Councilmember Patton.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just a clarification, City Manager Hall. And maybe I missed it. There is a not a timeline, but this could end when voters voted out. Did you talk about that?
That is correct. This tax is set up that the voters could vote it out at any time. And so I think it's going to make sure that we we spend it correctly. This would not, for instance, have a 20 year window that we're going to get it for 20 years, no matter what. We set it up so that we would be obligated to make sure that we're spending this in in a way that the residents feel comfortable. If they don't, they can vote their tax out at any point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So on this, I could speak a lot to this. You spoke a lot to it very well. But in this situation, I think less might be more, less might be best. And one key thing you mentioned is Imperial Beach, we always keep a balanced budget, you know? Thank you, City Manager Hall, Assistant City Manager Cortez, our finance. And all our staff are doing that as well as our council. It's huge. I urge. A little blurb.
Broke up, repeat that.
Repeat what? Did you not hear me?
I think you broke up right when you began the sentence, I urge.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, okay. So I urge residents to really read the blurb in the ballot. And that's all it's going to be. You need to dig deeper and really look at what offering to the city of Imperial. And the giant highlights are public safety, which every city needs. As well as. Youth and seniors. And I I pledge to value this and to make sure. The funds go as we stated. And that's all I have. Hopefully you heard that.
We did. Thank you so much, Mr. Patton. We do appreciate that. Mr. West.
Yeah, so thank you very much. Councilmember Patton, great words. The. The reality is this is a no brainer unless unless we want to go in the same position as other cities like. The city of Lemon Grove, which is teetering on the edge of bankruptcy and and having to. Move forward. We need this and it has been highlighted. Particularly during COVID and it is the reality of the situation is is if we don't raise revenue. We are never going to be able to provide the services that this city deserves and the city wants. And I think all of us have seen that. We we have taken a fiduciary responsibility for this city and I stand by those things. I buy my oath that I took when I signed on to be a council member and will continue to do that. And this is, this is important, you know, every project that I have had to, that we have had to do, we have had to do. In this city had to be paid for by outside sources, which caused our council to spend half our time trying to raise money for them, you know? Any art or. Anything that we are trying to do required us to go and and look at our businesses and look at our. People to help us raise that money. So it's time that we are able to. Put this sales tax on the ballot. I I urge all of our residents to take a deep dive into our finances and. Applaud the work that City Manager Hall and City Manager and Assistant City Manager Cortez and. And our new chief financial officer to to the hard work they have done to keep our city in. We are really the financial model of San Diego County, but but we need more revenue to make sure that we can provide the services that this city. Truly, truly needs. So I highly support this.
Thank you so much, Councilmember West. Councilmember Spriggs.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I guess I'll show my face as well. I I support the measures as well. And for similar reasons that have been stated by my colleagues, but I but I. I know the community and no community wants increased taxes and. I certainly don't like the idea of having to increase a tax that affects the whole community. And a sales tax does exactly that. But it was clear from the city manager's presentation. Clear from my my work chairing the. Emergency Committee on Preparation Sustainability and Recovery. And that that we are. We're beginning to eat ourselves. We're like a praying mantis. That is got no external food source, so they start eating away at, you know, a leg or an antenna or whatever. When when we have to start cutting our own staff positions in order to balance the budget. When we have to eliminate one of our fire positions. Even though we think we were able to do so without. Jeopardizing the effectiveness of the of the fire service, still nevertheless, the very idea. Makes us have to come to grips with the fact that we do not have. The the growing revenue sources to meet our our growing expenses. We're also going to be looking at the sheriff's contract for additional relief. I support our continued search for other revenue sources, particularly revenue sources that don't. Reflect charges against the community. For example, using the education center leasing it for for revenue. And other things. We need to be creative and we need to keep keep that going so that we don't have to come back to the community again for another sales tax increase. TOT is another matter. I don't think we should put it on the ballot at this point with two tax measures on the ballot. But we are behind other cities in TOT tax. And I support us taking a hard look at that, but also taking a look at how we collect TOT tax. There's no point. In raising the TOT if we're not fixing the leaks in our existing. Enforcement and collection. So I think we need to take as a council, as fiduciaries of our community. Another look at that before we get too far down the road of thinking about that in a year or so from now, whatever. Finally, I think it's a good idea. For us to, as a council, and to put this on the agenda and to and to kick it around. For for some reasons I'll mention, it's a good idea for us to think about a. A budget advisory committee in Imperial Beach. That was mentioned in one public comment. Other people have mentioned it to me. Or a financial oversight committee, whatever we want to call it. We've all pledged to increase and maintain and increase transparency. One way to do that is to have more citizens involved. Not just every, you know, six months or a year coming to open houses. But actually being really deeply informed about. How the city works and what it costs to run a city and what some of these tough choices are that we have to make all the time and that our. Our wonderful city staff has to make all the time and the kind of workload that they are that they are bearing. Being the smallest city staff per capita in the county. So I I think a citizens advisory group or budget advisory group is something we really should consider. And the other reason for it is. Hardly anybody comes to our our budget meetings. That we have one or two every year in in June prior to approving, you know, our rolling two year budget. And this is troubling to me. And I know it's troubling to all of us. We we talk about this sometimes. And if if there is a group of citizens who really want to pay attention to this. Then we should put out the invitation and see if if how many there are and try to figure out a way to involve them more more deeply. So that's really all all that I have to say. I think I I don't think I strongly support this. We've got to stop eating our young or eating ourselves. We need to start growing our revenue and this is a first step in the right direction. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Spriggs. Appreciate that. Mayor Parkton agree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the 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 comments from our colleague, Councilmember Spriggs regarding the metaphor and the praying mantis. It certainly is that way. We want to move away from eating ourselves and it's as off putting as the idea of that is. I think that's how we feel because we are right at that crux financially where we're still. Staying financially viable, but we don't want to go underwater. So first, I'd just like to thank the residents of IB for such a high rate of participation. It is obviously an issue that is very important to our community. And that's been evident on the response, the response rates with the survey. The forums that have taken place, even our law enforcement review ad hoc committee, we had a lot of conversation about this. So I appreciate everybody's participation in that manner. I absolutely support this measure for the sales tax. I think that. It is quite evident that we are behind, especially compared to some of our adjacent cities. Both in sales tax and in TOT. I think that TOT is something that we should explore down the road, certainly, once we our economy recovers and the hospitality industry recovers. I think that's definitely something we should pursue at a later date. I think for now, this is the right direction to take. I think that preserving our emergency services and our paramedic services, all of that is super important now more than ever. So I think it's really, really great that we'll be able to address some of these needs and and deficits within our our budget. So that we could really focus our our energy and attention financially there with this measure. I also support giving residents the option, you know, or the autonomy. measure. I also support giving residents the option, you know, or the autonomy to, you know, end this measure down the, down the road. If that's something that they would like to do, we put it up to them, and they can vote to, you know, end this if that's the direction that our community would like to take. So, just in, in, in summary, fully support the measure and appreciate all of the hard work from our staff that has gone into this and in our community for, for, for being so engaged. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate that. And so, I'm just going to make sure with City Clerk Kelly, is there any more additional public comment?
There are no additional oral comments. Let me just check the email, and there are no email comments as well.
Great. So, this is Mayor DeDina. Just want to make sure that we close the public comment period, and so I want to thank everybody, including our city staff and the consultants, City Manager Hall for leading this process to get public feedback. I think we have our unions, as, as well as acknowledged fiscal conservatives are urging us to adopt this measure, but also have oversight committees. I definitely like Councilmember Spriggs and my colleagues at the council definitely would, would, would support having an oversight committee. I think that's a great idea. I think one Chilavista that Mr. Garcia serves on has been very useful, and I think having people engage in our budget process is, is important. You know, I say this all the time, but I was a little kid in Imperial Beach back in the nineteen-seventies. You know, we had a new swimming pool. Every kid in IB had free swimming lessons. We had a brand-new fire station. We had a brand-new sheriff's station, you know, or back then it was the IB police station, but, and, and now, you know, we've, a new senior, a newer senior center. And so, now we've gone backwards in the sense that, you know, we are, we have the lowest level of, of recreational and senior services and programs in the county because, precisely because, in addition to having to cut our, our public safety funding and staff, so we, we have to have less public safety staff, less fire department staff, for example, and then we have absolutely, because we've cut that, and we have no money, then we have absolutely no money at all for vital services for our kids and our seniors and our families. So, yeah, this is really, really important, and I do appreciate all the work that went into it, and obviously will be a big supporter of this and support this. So, with that, I would like to ask City Clerk Kelly to read the title of the ordinance.
Ordinance number twenty-two-zero-one-one-nine-nine, an ordinance of the city of Imperial Beach, California, adding a new chapter, three-point-three-four, to Title III of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code for the purpose of establishing and imposing a general transactions and use tax for emergency response and vital municipal services to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration.
Is there a motion?
Agiri.
Patton seconds.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We need a motion to waive the full reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This was Deputy City Attorney Mitchell.
Yeah, and I'd like to entertain a motion, this is Mayor DeDina, to approve ordinance number twenty-two-zero-eleven-nine-nine, subject to voter approval by way of introduction by title only, with a waiver of the full reading. Is there a motion?
Agiri moves.
And Patton second.
Great. Thank you so much.
There has been a motion by Agiri, second by Patton, to approve ordinance number twenty-two-zero-eleven-ninety-nine, subject to voter approval by way of introduction by title only with a waiver of the full reading. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. And that, I'd like to also entertain a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-zero-seventy-two, directing that a general transactions and use tax measure be placed on the November third, twenty-twenty general election ballot, submitting the ballot text to the transactions and use tax measure to the voters at the election, authorizing the submittal of ballot arguments, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, and directing the city clerk to establish requirements for filing primary and rebuttal arguments regarding the transactions and use tax measure. Is there a motion?
Spriggs, so move.
West, second.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by West, to adopt resolution number twenty-two-zero-seventy-two. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. With that, thank you so much, everybody. I think we can adjourn the July twenty-ninth special meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you.